Hello, everybody.
Hey, Liz.
I'd like to start the emergencies left forward meeting for July 14th, 2023 at 5:05 PM. So the meeting needs to be called at order. Do I have... Seconded? Alright, so the meeting is called at order. Uh, we are open for public comment. And this is where I start to sit down and write some notes.
Anybody got tomatoes?
So if you... If you all decide you want to talk about... You want to hear what these guys have to say before you have your complaints that...
I think that would be a great idea to hear from them.
I just have one.
Alright.
Why didn't we use road detour signs? So people would know to go to Foster Hill, to Dog Pond, to Wheeler Hills.
Uh, 'cause we didn't know where which road was open. I mean, it's a lot of miles.
Yep.
And, uh, it all happened at once. I can help him cover that. It was a pretty dynamic situation.
Okay.
I have to make a call. Holy shit. You guys have done the best you can. And I'm going to...
Yes. Hi, dear. Nice work, gentlemen.
...complaint right now as I speak, but, um, I'm saying, yeah, I guess the arms is in trouble.
If I'm not tired, if I am.
Absolutely, Chris.
Yep, great work.
What do you think? Call the comment or...
I'm sorry. So we're gonna... Per Diana Paduzzi's comments, we will put public comment on for a moment. And Alfie, would you mind just going ahead and giving us a breakdown?
Um, sure. As far as I know, all of our roads are passable with the exception of Lake Hill Road. I worked all afternoon on that and discovered that it's a, uh, stone culvert. And it's very shallow, full of debris. So we're gonna have to replace that culvert.
On this end of Lake Hill Road?
Yeah, yeah, on the village side, yeah. Um, that watch it because of it being plugged, it washed out a big hole in the road there. And so I was in intent... I was in attempt of fixing the hole and also getting the culvert working. Because you can't actually fix the washout until the water stops and gets going where it's supposed to be. So that was my large attempt today, uh, this afternoon, one of the large attempts. We've also been very fortunate to be able to get some stone riprap from the quarry, which is what we're putting in the very bottom of these deep ditches that we are... Um, we've expired all of our storage, our gravel that we had stored at the shop, which was, I'm gonna say, about five, 600 yards.
Wow.
Um, it was, you know, stuff that we just keep on hand through for throughout the year for events like this. And I'm glad, and we all should be glad, that we did that because there's no pits open. There's no way to get to a pit if they were open. So us having that pile there, we were able to get it out and get our roads passable relatively quickly.
Great.
Uh, there is still a pile of work to do. I'm not saying that we're anywhere near out of the woods because there's a lot of ditches that are six and seven feet wide and five and six feet deep. Uh, I just came from East Hill and put up a bunch of cones up there for the weekend because we're just not gonna be able to get to it, um, so that people can see the dangers and hopefully not get in trouble.
But it is passable.
Everything is passable except for Blake Hill. That's the only one that got closed.
So that walks one lane?
Most of our... Yes, all of them are at least one lane. There are some that, that you can't try... You can't meet, you know? You have to... You have to wait for one or the other to get through. Um, but we had a lot of problems on the county road. There was one, that one culvert that washed away, uh, that first night. And so we went to try to fix it and there was just so much water that we ended up having to put two, two foot culverts, two foot diameter culverts together to hold the water. And then that next night, it rained, Tuesday night, it rained again and washed the road out again. So we were back again that next day to try to get the county road opened up. Particularly county road because I feel like that's a lot of, a lot of traffic travels that road. And I'm trying to focus mostly on the high, high traffic areas, uh, and the thoroughfares first. Again, there's a lot of, lot of work left to do. Happy to answer questions, best of my ability, but...
So would you address questions to me and then I'll pass them to Alfred?
You know, we live on East Hill Road and I know this...
Could I mean, could you give me your name?
Could you just give us your name, please?
Oh, Mark, Mark Kern.
Mark Kern.
And we live on East Hill Road where the second house, it was Mary's and Elizabeth's house, and we are pretty much landlocked in and there's no way of getting out. And it's a huge crevice through in front of our house.
Which happens with every big storm. It happened with every big storm that we had.
And so it's, uh, and it's because, I mean, we were, we were out just right before the flight and when it was rushing down and those culverts up there by the woods, I mean, it was, it just couldn't handle a lot. And it just, like a knife, just went right through in front of the house. So I don't know. It's, I'm just throwing it out there at the main timeline.
So there is, there is. There's a culvert that's above your house is slated for replacement and to a bigger size. There's a grant in place, there's, that's, it's in the works. So when that culvert goes in, this shouldn't happen again.
Okay.
But there, you're right, there are two culverts there from the intersection down to your house.
Yeah, yeah.
And they just got overtaken. It's just so much water and it doesn't take much of a stick or a little bit of debris and it plugs it and then the force of the water more and more comes to it and then before you know it...
Your bridge is gone.
It's overtaken, right. The bridge is gone, right.
That's what happened with the state road culverts. They were climbed.
So are you saying you can't get out of your driveway?
Yeah, we can, yeah. There's no way. We have two ways to get in, but we're, we're pretty much, there's no way we can go around or proper to get out. So we're relying on the generosity of our neighbors to go shopping. To go shopping and she has cardiac problems too. So it's been, it's been really... So it just like a timeline of what, how long that's gonna take. And it's, it's kind of dusty.
Yeah, I'm planning on East Hill Monday.
Oh, really?
Monday, Tuesday. So certainly by the end of day Tuesday, that should be all in repair.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Again, going to the, the more main thoroughfares, uh, as priority.
And I, I just want to dig you back on that same thing. I live, I had to crawl out of a five-foot trench to get to this meeting tonight. You know I can do it because I'm still strong.
We need video.
I'm telling you, uh, I got no way to do anything. I know the town, it can repair and will, but I mean, can you give me any kind of feedback through the timeline?
I came, I've come and looked at yours.
You did?
I'd come and looked and knocked on your door and I couldn't get...
You did, you knocked.
You crawled through that, uh...
Yes.
You crawled through the crevice and you knocked on my door and I didn't hear you. Oh, my God.
Can I inject on this as well?
No, I got a doorbell now. I have a doorbell. You ring the doorbell. What did you think or what can you do or how? Can I get a temporary crossover? I, I mean, I'm old and I walked my groceries over last night. And I'm telling you, I don't want to do it again, but I, if you tell me that you'll help me temporarily, just put a thing, I look at it, I, I'm pretty Vermont smart and I can do something, but you know what? I need a brace to hold up the thing. It's a, it's a goddamn 20-foot crevice.
It's a bridge, yeah.
I mean, I can't, I can't build a bridge.
We definitely need an excavator or something.
What are you, what are you gonna do for me?
Well, um, I would love to help you.
I'm sure.
She lives on the other side, so she just needs to be able to walk over.
Right, but as I understand, I mean, that, that's not, it's not even a class four road, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is. You believe me, it is. I've done this before.
We've been through this before.
Yes, we have.
So I'm just going with what I'm told.
Yeah, okay.
Um, that the class four goes to the bridge and stops. That's what I'm told. I, I haven't investigated yet. Uh, happy to do that. What I do goes through the select board for the most part. When it comes to these types of things, this is a big one. That's gonna be an expensive bridge to put in there.
You betcha.
Temporary or not.
No, it's a repair. It's not replacement. It's a repair. You've done this before on my bridge.
It really doesn't take, it really doesn't matter if it's a repair or replacement. It's totally expensive, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'm not talking about... I just want to be able to drive over my bridge and not crawl down and crawl up.
Right, alright, no, we understand. I understand that for sure.
So, um, is there a way maybe somebody can help me with a temporary bridge? Just a walking bridge? I can't... Don't they have those plates, those big metal plates available?
Uh, they, they may, I mean...
I've got an expanse that I can't really do myself and Vermont's wrong. I would do the goddamn bridge, I have plans, but they just aren't long enough, you know what I mean? Yeah, and...
Sure.
Carol, what's it, a 20-foot span you said?
More than...
More than 20?
It's, it's probably 18 feet across and I have to crawl down and crawl up. And I, you know what? I ain't gonna do this anymore, so...
I'm gonna come take a look. I have a 20-foot staging plank and I'd be happy to like borrow it if it's enough to get across.
You have a 20-foot what?
Staging plank. It's a little plank.
Yeah, no, I, I'm welcoming anything that anybody could give me because I really can't do this.
Mm-hmm, I believe that.
Yes, please, go ahead and then, yes, sir.
We should be following what the state's wanting from us. I just spoke with the EOC in Waterbury today and is... The town offices should be collecting all of these damaged areas so that the select board can prioritize for Alfie.
Collect information down there.
Yeah, because, because it's really not fair for Alfie to try to manage all this himself.
Yeah.
We need someone at the town offices. This is what they want from us because I spoke with them today to... So that the town folks either on our website or via phone can collect all this information and you can sit down with the select board to prioritize for those type of things. That kind of poor Alfie will never keep this up if he'll be on the phone not fixing roads. But that's what the state's looking for. It's on my list, but trying to help you out here.
Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry, Ms. Carol, you're gonna have to wait just a second.
Tim Appleton, um, just along with what everybody's saying. I'm hearing bits and pieces where people are still stranded, um, at their residences and I just think it behooves the select board to undergo some kind of an assessment for how many residents are currently stranded at their houses.
And then come through with some kind of a prioritization to unstring them.
And I think that's gotta be at the top of the list somewhere because some people cannot access the public road system right now. So it just makes sense to be able to allow people to get to their jobs, get to where they need to be, and not have to crawl in and out and do what they have to do to, to access the public road system, so...
Tim, that's a really good point, thank you.
Yeah, and to piggyback on the state is wanting this, that's one of the things that needs to be done.
And so whoever knows of anybody who's in that situation, please let us know.
Ms. Carol, I'm gonna make you wait one more time, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mary, again, Jimmy. I first want to ask, who was the person who posted on Face, on Front Porch Forum that I canceled this meeting? No one.
No, I didn't see that. I saw the previous one where you...
No, it was...
Someone hacked my account and posted that I canceled this meeting. And I posted, I did not.
I repeated it, so... The other day that was like that, right?
That's my first issue. My second issue is Maggie's place. She was allowed to build that driveway. No one stopped her. I told Ron she was doing it. He was, that it was being done. He did nothing and now you have a mudslide.
Right.
And it went into the pole and it went into Robin Allen's place, I think. So the listers have got to be doing their job.
She put, she put like a road up into the woods or something?
She put a ramp up there and I told Ron and he took pictures.
And he can't do, he can't tell her not to do that.
Yes, he can. He's a lister. He's a lister.
He can charge her for it.
He can, he can tell her that she's not supposed to be putting in roads without approval, a permit, the proper construction and a, and a registered person that knows what they're doing. You just can't pile up dirt, make a road. So I'm done. I will, I also want to thank everybody in town who's helped because you guys have been amazing.
Alright, you have to wait. Thank you, Mary. You have to wait one more time. Sorry, you've already spoken once, so I apologize. No, but this gentleman had a comment.
I am deeply moved by her place, so I'll talk fast. I try to be concise, which no one will believe. This is to Paul, or it's actually to Paul and Alfred Brackett. We have to take it on faith that you believe that all the roads are open, but open is a four-letter word, like a few other four-letter words I can think of. My question is this, if one calls 911 for medical or a fire emergency...
I can cover that for you.
What I was gonna ask you was, how does the person at the other end know to check with somebody who knows whether the road is open? Are you guys risking going on a place where you can't fit a fire wagon or an ambulance? I'm really concerned about, you know why I'm concerned about it.
Yeah, so early on in the incident, we were isolated. I called the EOC in Waterbury, wherever they are.
In Waterbury anymore.
Tuesday. Yeah, they put the EOC back where it flooded in 2011 and then flooded again. The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. With that emergency call, it may got this road fixed. And at the same time, we, we don't have access to Hardwick, so we don't have our ambulance. So Tuesday, I put, I called East Montpelier, they're covering for Hardwick for us since then until that road gets opened up.
And Paul, that's mutual aid, right?
Correct, yeah. So they, right now, um, we're, we're responding ahead of the ambulance with our first response and making sure the ambulance can't get there. We had a number of incidents Monday and Tuesday where we had to deal with patients very long-term who were quite sick in Woodbury and Callis and we could not transport them. One guy, I think two hours, we finally got him out of there. So we've managed this okay and every day it's improving. I know the problem is worse in Callis with closed roads. Because like, I, everything I've driven, I was like Alfie says, or you can get there. It's not, it's, you know, get a glass of sake and scarf and go, but sometimes, but there's edges and there's sticks and there's, so just be super careful. But we're covered. We've covered, I think we've done 38 some runs since Monday, so we're covered.
Okay.
And the dispatch knows to call me if there's any questions. West Woodbury, I've covered. They're going, Hardwick's handling, yeah.
Hardwick's handling, no. That's what I read. That's great. Ms. Carol, finally, please come back.
Oh, my God. Can I remember? Yes, I can. Okay, so I called, um, the governor's conference that we all listened to, I'm sure you all did. He said, "One, call 211. Call your home insurance policy." And I'm telling you, I did all of the above. 211 guided me to, okay, make a claim on your personal insurance. And I am saying, I don't know how to do this, I didn't do anything, but they're saying, oh, you can't. We can't because you have to file a claim. I didn't file a claim because I know the town is responsible to repair my bridge. Should I let that... Because they were saying FEMA is gonna load you a bunch of money. Should I claim on 211 that I've had damage? Am I going to claim on my personal insurance right now? No, because I know you'll take care of me. But am I talking about four months down the road? Tell me.
I'm gonna let, what? Go ahead, miss, and I'm gonna let Paul speak.
Well, they tell you that they want you to call your insurance company to get the denial because they're not, we've done it already, they've denied it. And that's what you'll use to go to FEMA or to the town or whoever else you want to be responsible for.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that. You're telling me I have to call my insurance company and say, "You're full of shit and I'm not claiming..."
No, you just want, you just want to, you just want to hear your insurance company tell you, "No, they're not gonna do anything about it. You should call the insurance company just to have it on file that you did attempt your insurance company."
Okay, first step, 211?
First step, 211. It's, you can do it online.
Okay, so you, so just help me on this whole thing. If I call 211, I report my property damage and then they tell me I, I've gotta call my personal insurance and then the guy there says, "I'm not gonna handle anything until you put in a claim." I said, "I'm not making a claim because this FEMA money has come here..."
I can cover this for you.
Oh, yeah, you're trying to help me.
She's very correct. If you have personal, when FEMA comes in, there's basically two layers. There's public infrastructure and then there's private home damage. Been through many, many floods in my time with the state. They're gonna come in level two assessment probably next week to handle the public infrastructure damage, roads, fire stations, town, all the stuff we have. The next level is the personal side. I don't have very good news for you there. Every homeowner is required to file with their homeowners, which probably 99% will get denied unless you live in a floodplain and have flood insurance.
And by the way, we're not mapped as a floodplain.
So you have to have the denial from your insurance company, which will open you to apply for that second level private property FEMA program, which, again, this is me speaking. I don't know how it's gonna play out this time, but in the past, they've covered some personal, like the structure, but no personal property. And again, how that's gonna play out, it's, it's 10 or 11 years since we did one, but that's probably what's coming. But those with personal property where this goes back to the same thing with the roads, I would also have the town offices collect this information so that we have it. And then you're kinda waiting because, because once they have it, they can pass the FEMA stuff to you when it comes, which is a very convoluted process.
Second question.
Ms. Carol, I'm gonna wait for one second. Is there another question that's out there before I call on Ms. Carol again?
I just have a question for Jonah. Jonah, would you peek out the door and see if my kid is still on the playground?
He's still there, so I could win somewhere.
That's a reasonable, that's a reasonable question. Let's see where Joel is right now.
Person, any damage at your house?
Wait.
Sorry.
Sorry? Not appropriate yet? Yes, miss?
Yes, I'm Evelyn Bailey. I live on Blake Hill. And I just, if I might just, um, address a comment to Carol and to everybody else in this room. There's a process that has to be followed, whether you agree with it, whether you think it's stupid, whether you like it, whether you think the town's gonna take care of you. There is a process that you have to go through to get to the end result. That's it. You articulated the process, you just have to do it.
It's really cumbersome and I've sat in many, many cities and towns in this and worked through with this with people and it's really a struggle for your private homeowners. I don't, private homeowner damage is gonna be very, very tough. So just, it's a grind.
That, that, can I speak for just a minute? I know that you are responsible for my bridge. The town is responsible for my bridge. That's...
Yeah, we've established, I think...
Yeah, I know. So should I do what you're telling you all to do, go to 911, you know, um...
I would.
I would go through...
Why would I do that if you are gonna help me?
Because as Evelyn said, it's the process. If you don't fit...
And it'll speed it up.
It'll speed it up.
If you delay this, you could be adding months to your...
You could be last on the list.
Right.
So the more that you can do to document...
Correct, take photographs.
Take photos, go to 211, then go to the insurance company and file the claim. If they deny it, fine. If they don't, great, but they will. So then we get that documentation. All of that stuff can help us move forward with how FEMA responds to you and helps us with that forward process. The more that we can do to document all of that damage, especially on a class three or class four road, that benefits all of us.
Ken, I, I am gonna do that, but the thing is, it just like, is convoluted because...
It's terribly convoluted.
You know what? If you're responsible, if the town is responsible, I should not do anything. I'm just gonna let you come in and do it. Why would I do all that shit?
You better remember that because you don't want to be last on the list.
I'm on the list. I called Alfie. Where's Alfie? I called him.
When is the class two, class three route? It's out of service.
Chuck, you're gonna have to, you have to wait in line, dude.
I'm so sorry to throw this...
Ms. Evelyn, you were next, but this gentleman had his hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Quick procedural question for those of us who are not in internet land. Can, can some or all of this at least be begun on the phone?
You, 211 has a...
211 has a phone option, right?
And, but they won't all, so often you dial 211 and then say you go to the internet. That isn't possible for some of us. Can it be continued? Does anybody know?
Welcome to walk across the bridge that I no longer have, get to my place, and you can use the internet because we actually do have internet. So you can drop by our place and you can use the internet and I'll help you through.
Careful what you offer.
Nope. If you want to walk across the remnants of our bridge, come on over. I'm totally good with it. But in some cases, I completely agree with you. They've walked away from using some of those phone services. It's an initial and you get a number. You get that number and then you have to translate it back to a digital service. And I'm willing to help with any of that. Anybody who wants it, I'm willing to help. Guaranteed, alright? I'm sorry. Ms. Evelyn and then, yes, ma'am.
So, again, on, on the process issue, um, it's really important for individuals to do their part. Individuals, the nonprofits like 211 who are there to help individuals, the state, the feds, FEMA, our town government, all have a part to play in this. And as individuals, we have to do our part, even though it's con, they seem convoluted. The end result will be that the town can get money from FEMA to offset the cost of helping you or you or me. That's why it's important to go through the process. I know you're frustrated and you're not hearing, but I hope that you listen because this is really important.
Ms. Evelyn's point is well made and it backs up what Paul said. As much as we can document, that will help us. And if we can have some sort of clearinghouse, which I don't know how exactly we're gonna do that, we will broadcast it as soon as we come up with a plan. But as much as we can document, as fast as we possibly can, that's what we're gonna take advantage of. You're gonna have to wait.
No, I'm gonna do what Carol has to say, you should...
Okay.
Just another thing. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
You're telling me I gotta do the protocol that the governor said. Call 211, document with my insurance company. They're not listening to me. They're telling me I have to make a claim before I can talk to them.
That's the way it is. But that's the way it is.
Yeah, just make a claim.
Come on, they should tell me. I pay them a premium every month. They should tell me about policy. I had questions, they negated that, the whole nine yards, I'm telling you. Anyway, so, anyway, 211, you want me to file it?
Just tell them it's your bridge.
What?
Just tell them it's your bridge.
What? Can I do? I'm trying to...
Go ahead, miss, please.
Can I, Paul, from back here says that it's convoluted and unfortunately, I mean, all of the money for, whatever's paying for any of this is coming from the taxpayers. But if you, you don't do this, you could end up not getting anything or the town is going to pay for this. The taxpayer's here. So you have to file that claim, rotten paperwork is, get it denied, and then they have more documentation to present to FEMA to get money for the town to be able to afford to fix the bridge.
The leverage is really important.
And that's, that's trusting the bureaucracy of the government is on that.
Patience and managing expectations.
I'm sorry. Please go ahead, sir. Can you say your name first?
Steven Murphy. I'm on the Library Board of Trustees. I just want to let everyone know if you need internet access or access to the computers. First, internet access, there's Wi-Fi broadcast from the library around the clock and you can get that from just outside the building. And if you need access to computers or internet or anything else, you can welcome to visit the library. We're open on regular hours, Wednesday, 1 to 5, Thursdays, 2 to 6, Saturdays, 9 to 1. And if you have any questions, you can call me or send me an email. I'll help you otherwise if I can.
Thank you, Steve.
So I, I guess I'm just thinking about this in, in Carol's case. If, as Paul explained it, you have public infrastructure and then you have private property and it's been established that the bridge on Carol's road on her driveway is a public asset, why is she now responsible for a public asset? And having to file all the paperwork and so on and so forth when it, it's not private property? Am I reading something wrong into that? Am I reading something wrong into that or...
No, Tim, I don't think you are.
I think it is public.
It's public infrastructure. There's no question. You are fundamentally accessing your home via this structure. Is that true?
Yes. My bridge is...
It's not your bridge, right?
It's Carol's bridge.
It's our bridge.
Carol's bridge. But you know my...
So be careful. Be careful.
Help to you.
All right, it's not your bridge.
I'm going to clap, but you won't do that. I want my bridge repaired and you can do it because the bridge is titty cornered. And I'm a lady and I am not going to crawl down.
I'm going to find a way to get you yours.
We can pass the bridge. I think if you could, even if it's town infrastructure, because we must figure that out, even as that, what I was told by all the repairs they're doing right now need to look temporary, like don't polish it up because if it's polished up nice, this was directly from the people in FEMA. Don't make it look nice because then they won't pay for it. So make sure the edges are rough, it's bumpy. So with your bridge, if it's established that it's town infrastructure, if it's an expensive project, FEMA, it'll be a process. And even if Alfie dumps two loads of fill in there, it's going to be a process. So I'd just like to move by the bridge because I think it's going to get fixed. It's just a matter of...
How fast we can get there?
Ah, whoa, come on Alfie. Don't do that.
He's working on it.
It's not fair.
No, I think it was, I think Alfie misunderstood. It's been a back and forth over the years, but I think...
Honestly, I'm fairly new to this wall.
Whoever told you that...
Nap of roads that is in front of me. So I don't know where all the class four, class three, I don't know if the town owns a bridge or don't own a bridge. I know Chris's, I'm assuming Chris's is a private bridge.
Absolutely.
I didn't know about yours. I was told that it was class four to the bridge, but you built the bridge when you built your house. That's what I was told.
Nope. That bridge has been there. It was like...
Anyway. So this is a conversation for offline? And I promised Carol we will address it. I promise we will. We'll find a way to address it. Okay? Other public comment while we have Alfie and Paul here, you have a lot of stuff to do. Any other questions that you can address to them directly via me? Please.
Your name?
Kate Miko.
I'm sorry?
Kate Miko.
Okay.
On Harris Cove. I want to thank Alfie. He came over, responded to our emails within a few hours. We had a problem with Wilbur Road and then I don't know what other road because some of them are cows above us that just made Niagara Falls come down across from our house and down our eastman and down our road and down our house and her house. So I know you've been working hard on it, but I didn't know how it was going because it opened up again like Monday night, I think.
Well, it was Tuesday night's rain was the second time. We fixed it and then the same thing happened again.
Yeah.
Because of the heavy rains. I understand that Callis is working on getting their culvert fixed so that will mitigate a lot of the problem.
Right, I think it was proper.
Our culvers are now working, all of them are working in that area. I don't know, I've never walked up in the woods there. I don't know if there was a beaver dam or some sort of a pond that let go to create that, but...
There was a beaver dam.
Up above Wilbur Road.
That's correct.
So, so there you go. I mean, that's...
Unfortunately.
You could have had the culvers spick and span or twice the size and it probably still would have happened.
It would have clogged within minutes, unfortunately.
There's no culvert unearthed that was going to take the water that came down.
Nope.
Not even the bridges were outside. It was terrifying.
Really?
It was a little creepy. Other public comments while we have our town road foreman and our EOC manager here. Chuck, please.
I have an estuary and dump truck. Whatever I can do to help, one blind. All you got to do is call. I helped Paul out today. We worked on the brook over here and got it back into the banks with this other guy, Jake.
Jake.
Yeah, where his house was getting flooded.
So...
The state sort of did it. Chuck got it fixed up.
Yeah. But I'm willing to do anything I can do to help and...
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Much appreciated.
Much appreciated.
And then just make sure you submit the bill to the select boards so they can collect.
Hey, sign me up, Chuck.
Yes, miss, please.
Should I come up and pick the beaver dams up first?
No.
You don't need to.
Get out of here, Chuck.
The beaver dams are not breached. That dam is so perfect.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So am I.
All right, go. Go off. Off.
It's a town that hates beavers.
I'm Livy Case. I live on Foster Hill.
Livy Case, thank you.
Right near South Woodbury Village and piggybacking on the dam issue that just walked out the door. The dam breached there and I'll be, you had somebody there first thing and the more I was incredible, you guys pulled that spring house out. It was, I couldn't believe you were there already.
You were there at 2:00 in the morning, I think, with the fire department looking at it.
Yeah. I mean, that was such a quick action to prevent that from getting much worse than it could have gotten. But now the dam has another, has a breach in it, so the spillway is now higher than the breach. And I'm just wondering, is that a claim in there somewhere like this 211? And is it Liz's property? Does she make a claim?
So that would be a...
Does that affect you?
Uh...
It's a structural...
That needs to be given to the EOC and water areas.
Yeah, it doesn't affect our property except that it washed up. Maybe our property goes to the edge of that creek, but nothing to worry about for us except that...
It's...
Nikki, yeah.
Exactly. It did affect our property owners right across the street, Nikki and Martin, right?
Right, yeah, they...
A lot.
Well, their water supply is now compromised.
Right, so I don't know, is that something? Because that dam was already in question, like for the town, right? We were having meetings about that already.
That's correct.
Should somebody report that to 211? Should we do that? And I...
You guys should be reporting that to the EOC.
It's already...
It's been reported to EOC.
Okay, so I don't need to do anything or think about it.
I did report that one.
Okay.
So the dam inspectors were there again yesterday.
Oh, they were.
Only because I had circled back.
Did they say anything?
I don't have a record of exactly what the results were. I'm sorry, I had to go to work.
No, no, no.
Took me a while to walk to work.
I'm just curious if they hear anything about it. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carol, wait one moment. Jonah, please.
Joan Meacham. I live up on Old Quarry Road. I feel a little silly bringing this one up given, but the class four up above me, the class three is fine because Chuck fixed it. Nope. Because he lives on it, so he took care of it. But the class four up above me is almost completely washed out and people keep trying to go up there. It's gotten better since Cabot Road was cleared, but the people who have been here long enough know that that's the alternate route up to Cabot Road. And there's a lot of people still trying to get up there. So, you know, I don't know what the plan is for the, I know it's on the agenda for today, but I just wanted to say it's up there. I think the drainage probably needs to be looked at on that road because a big part of why it is washed out is because Coleman Parker doesn't really know much about drainage. And he's the one who set that up. So it probably, if it's going to be repaired, that should get looked at.
So can I ask you one more question?
Uh, yes.
So are people using that more because, I haven't been up Cabot Road, but you're using it to avoid problems on Cabot Road?
There was a big washout on Cabot Road that wasn't passable, that it got one lane. And so I think people were still trying to go up, you know? And I know that Elizabeth and Jezebel have been trying to get, I don't know why Elizabeth keeps driving up there because she knows it's washed out. But they've been driving up there. There were a couple of other people on the first couple of days who were driving up there to try and see if it was passable. I do think it would be a good idea for there to be a sign up there because if you, it's only 100 yards up before you're in a ditch. And so if you're not paying attention, you know, a sign just past my driveway is probably a good idea.
It said, "Road closed"?
Road closed.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to respond here.
Yeah. What would you like the sign to say?
Road closed.
Local traffic only maybe, or I mean, Jezebel and Elizabeth or...
I mean, I guess they can try and drive up there. I just think it's dangerous. It's not my call. It's not, but...
I'm not trying to speak for Alfie right now, but I have to be honest. And Ms. Carol, close your ears if you want to. Class four roads are not our...
Totally agree.
I get it.
Not our direct issue at this moment.
I know, I know. I get it.
Totally agree. And I just bring that up because it was on the list. Yeah, I think it should be on the very bottom of the list to fix it.
All right. Not that you're on the bottom of the list, Ms. Carol, but I think that there are, right now, Cabot Road, because I've been driving it.
I agree.
My wife has been driving it to get to Hardwick. 45 minutes later, she finally gets there. But Cabot Road is working pretty darn well for a lot of effort that's gone in. So we have to prioritize. And Jonah, I appreciate it very much, but we've got a list of things that just have to be dealt with first.
I completely agree.
Ms. Evelyn?
So just to kind of to put in the notes somewhere and to document for future reference with regard to Old Quarry Road. After Irene, that was the only way for people to get to sections of Cabot Road. So this wasn't Irene, but it was necessary to do some improvements to Old Quarry Road after Irene so school buses could get through, so people could get through. So while it may not be a priority right now, it is a necessary backup when all hell breaks loose.
That's why the town went through the whole business to get the...
Exactly. So just, you know, for planning purposes, it's not a road that cannot be paid attention to at some point just because it's an essential workaround in the event of a large-scale disaster.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
I'm surprised that it deteriorated so much since the point where it was really...
It doesn't have any functional long-term drainage. That's a different, that's a different issue.
You have previous owners to thank for that.
You have a different issue there. Ms. Carol, please.
I don't even know what I want to comment on, but I think what you just said was absolutely great. But I'm just saying, like, I'm stuck in the woods with a seven-foot hole. Somebody maybe temporarily, Alfie, you'll build a little bridge?
Carol, Liz is going to try and hook you up with the ramp so you can walk across.
I'm going to come check it out and see what we can do. Are you good with like, are you good with kind of balancing on, you know?
Hey, look at me.
Yeah. Get you a couple of people.
Flashlight, I can do. But I, yeah, I ain't going to crawl down any...
Ms. Carol will figure it out.
Thank you. Sorry.
Other public comment while we do have these gentlemen here with us, otherwise we're going to move along in our agenda.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to both of you. They always do. Excuse me?
They can't leave because they're still the agenda.
I know, but I just want to say thank you. Yeah. We're running on here, but Diana, would you give us the emergency shelter report, please?
Oh, we all been with Paul and Alfie?
We're going to do this and then we're going to let Paul go.
Okay, emergency shelter, you know, Monday night. Paul showed up at my door about 7:00 o'clock and he said, "Hey, things are flooding the emergency shelter." He said he opened it up and turned on the lights and left me to deal with the rest of it. And it was kind of interesting. Lots of walking up the stairs. Yeah, we had some people who were trapped and they were very friendly. They were happy to have a place and Internet and phone. And the next day, I brought down some breakfast and made lots and lots and lots of coffee and people kept coming in for coffee and for electricity. And then we went down and raided the food shelves. That was very nice. Most of it didn't get eaten because most of people left during the day, but, you know. Then there were two people, an older couple from Greenwood Lake Road or from County Road who had stayed over another night because they were just unsure about getting to their house. So that worked out, but I found out during that process that we need a better communication system. People don't have their names in the book. Or of course, when the phone, when the power goes out, which happened just after he made me this assignment, feeding people with phones don't work because they're, you know, it's that little thing that's plugged into the wall. So more hardline phones and get your phone in the book. I don't know, a lot of people don't know that you can get your phone number in the little Hardwick book even if...
It's a cell phone.
Yeah, even if it's a cell phone.
Thank you. Paul? Excuse me, Steven, I apologize.
I'd like to make a comment on that issue there. I think that Don Turgeon, the custodian of the building, deserves a lot of credit for the work he did in setting up and Diana too, she was there.
And you and your whole family.
I literally showed up with water coming out the top of my boots. I said, "I opened it up, have fun," and left.
And Carol, I just want to say, we had four guests there from Virginia, actually five. Four of them had come off the Appalachian Trail. Their dad drove them here and they got stuck in the village. And they were so appreciative. The next day, they made a $50 donation to the food pantry. And there was another gentleman who was on his way from Gunkwit to Colchester and he ended up here by a series of food trucks. He was greatly appreciative too. So I just want to thank everyone and see how important it is that we have our doors open. You never know who's gonna arrive and for what reason. So thank you all for helping. And all the help that was done out of sight, too. I'm sure there are countless other people helping neighbors and cutting. I know a neighbor was making the runs in his car when the phones were down. Another one was out in his tractor fixing the road. Someone cut, you know, like many, cut down trees that are crossing the road. So thanks to all here and all out there.
How are you, Steven? Paul?
Where do you want?
So our life started poorly Sunday. I think we got five inches of rain Sunday is what I heard from somebody's rain gauge during that event where we were overrun. Herick's cold. It was terrifying over there, the water. We thought we were gonna be stuck there. There was a car wrapped in electrical lines that we were battling with. So we were out quite busy, a dozen calls Sunday afternoon. I think we left the station around nine. Monday, I came by around two, it was starting to flood a little bit, but then the water receded. So I went home. And I want to say the flood started around
Six thirty.
Six thirty-ish. We've had flooding there before. This was different. It went from, it came over the culvert to, we had two feet of water, like, so we lost some things because we were running, running as fast as we could to get out of the building. We staged up by Bro Cookson's old garage where the auto shaman is initially. The water was probably three feet, four feet high moving very quickly. We had to stop cars because they kept going through. And the last car got floated and almost ended up upside down in the water, which we wouldn't have been able to help them.
Oh, God.
We did a number of rescues from houses. Some people didn't want to, didn't want to come out. And I told them, we're not coming back. So they had, once they were there, they were staying there. We had a lot of calls for people that had water around their houses. As long as they were safe, we told them to stay in place. That's what the safest thing to do was. The road's gone, but you're gonna, you're gonna be safe. One or two in the morning, the, I think the road at Bajarness's blew out. And we had the standard down the Cabot Road flood, so we had to move further down the road to down, down to your sister's house. We were two, we're down in that area. That wasn't fun to watch. And that's just kind of how the night went. We had three or four more calls over the night. I can tell you that where these washouts happened, I checked and it was terrifying. Like, we ended up just leaving because the road was just disappearing in front of your feet. Then things calmed down till morning and Jason Lowell went and cut the trees to get the power back on and took Hardwick Electric's credit, buy those guys coffee. Because a couple of those guys volunteered to climb poles at our own school to get our lights back on. So, because they could have just said, we can't get a bucket truck in. But the guy came in an ATV and he said, we'll get a guy to climb. And I think we got some pictures of it. So that was awesome.
Let's see, that was
Yeah, so there's been some people that did some really fabulous work to get, get our lights on. Because it was already miserable enough with no, being everything wrecked, but then we at least had power and internet. Today, we ran a lot of calls. I realized we were isolated, having to deal. We had a lot of our members stuck with sick people that were stuck. One was having a heart attack and he's callous. They were there for two hours circling the drain with James Daly and Molly, who took care of him until the ambulance finally got in the hospital. We had others that they needed insulin or they needed some kind of medication. And we were able to find somebody in town who had medicine that could take care of them for a day or so. Because we were isolated. Couple of sick people that we convinced that they were not sick enough to need helicopter evacuation. Because that's all we really had as an option. Swift Water Rescue said they'd come a number of times. We really didn't need anybody to be Swift Water Rescue, so I just didn't use the resource. I did call the EOC mid-morning Tuesday to let them know about the road, which that got the V-Trans. They said, we'll be here at six Wednesday morning with a fleet of trucks. And that's what happened, so. And I've been in touch with them on and off. We've probably done close to forty runs since Sunday. So we've been very busy. We lost all of our medical gear in the flood. But District Six EMS showed up Wednesday night with eight stocked EMS bags. So we're covered there. That's kind of the response. It's been, I think I've got sixty, seventy hours and two nights of no sleep. But we're here, we're surviving.
Trucks are okay?
Trucks are okay. The building's a disaster at the moment, doesn't look so bad. But it had three and a half feet of water in it, high-velocity water. So it's the stud cavity's got mud in them. So we've got a, we're having a workday to gut most of the inside of the building tomorrow. We've been, we filed an insurance claim. FEMA's been in touch with us. We've got to get the building open and dry. Insurance people will be here next week sometime.
Paul, do you want to announce that as a workday on Saturday?
I did, it's online. So nine o'clock tomorrow, removing sheet rock. If you look on our Facebook page, I've been disseminating information. Kind of things we're gonna need, if you're, if you're not inclined to work, like, you can't pull sheet rock off walls and lug it outside. And unfortunately, it's gonna be piled next to the building because the dumpster, I don't know when a dumpster's coming. The cell, we paid for it, it's coming.
The post office side of the building or the town hall side of the building?
Probably down where you see that stuff, it'll probably be there.
Okay, so post office side?
Yeah, go way down. I'll try to keep it as small as possible, but we'll have, there's a dumpster coming, I just don't know when.
Yep.
But we are having a workday tomorrow. Things we could really use are, if someone's good at clerical paperwork and administrative tasks, because we have, and the town's gonna have the same issue as FEMA paperwork. And I'm sure they're not gonna cry if somebody loves doing paperwork. Because if you've ever dealt with, I'm trying to explain to you, like, when we get grants from last time, you get three different programs. And you don't even know, when they send you a check, you've got to figure out what program it comes from. And then they would tell you, you gave us too much money. And they've got to send some back. And the next day, they give us two thousand, you write in two thousand, the next day you get a ten thousand dollar check. When you call them, like, well, that's a different program. So this is the kind of what we got to deal with. We're supposed to get a Level Two inspection next week. I don't know when that's gonna happen from FEMA. So that's where we're at. Fire environment-wise, if we can get the building gutted out tomorrow, just to give everybody a fair warning, we're probably gonna need to do more work to the building than insurance or FEMA's gonna cover. Because when you strip it to this point, we might as well fix the stuff we were gonna do anyway. Because as part of our new building, we're gonna keep that old building. Because that's how we saved a building an extra two thousand square feet was by using this one. So I, my feeling is right now that we should just, we're going to be eligible for the, they told me the program, but it's half percent money. So fair warning, I'm probably just gonna go ahead and borrow this money. And we're gonna have to figure it out because we've got to get the building back up and running by winter.
Use that building after?
Yeah, so that's been the plan all along is because we, we saved a million bucks by not building, rebuilding that square foot, which will end up storing our trailers, boats, and that'll be our equipment storage area.
Same problem coming into the future, and it's a flood plan.
Well, we could end up with FEMA telling us we have to tear it down. And then, so again, I don't, that's why what's gonna happen in the short term is it's gonna be gutted, dried out, and we'll wait and hear from FEMA.
Right.
So nothing, nothing as far as the build back is gonna be happening. We're required to just, insurance and FEMA-wise, stop the bleeding. And then they're gonna, they're gonna help us with figuring out.
Right.
And all the other stuff that you lost?
Let's spread it out ahead of us first.
Yes.
I'm not speaking. No, I'm taking it back. I don't want to speak.
Okay.
And all the other stuff you lost?
We're going through that now. So tomorrow, we also need people to go through the stuff that we need. It's not a lot of it, but we can throw it away once we've documented what it is. There's like, we have a bunch of leather gloves.
Like your washer and dryer?
Well, yeah, that's damaged. So whether they're gonna fix it, I turned it on, it works. We got a gear dryer, this is really expensive stuff that got damaged. Again, insurance wasn't real comforting. Like, the way the passive works is they, basically the towns are putting money in this insurance pool. And the losses will all be calculated throughout all the towns as far as physical, you know, town offices, fire stations. And then you'll get a percentage of the loss based on how much money they gotta pay out. So I don't even know if that, hopefully next week I'll have a better answer. But we probably are gonna have to borrow money in anticipation of funds to be received. And not all that may be paid. It's fair warning, because, you know, if we're gonna fix it, we might as well fix it.
So if somebody comes to help tomorrow, do they wear gloves? Do you have gloves?
Well, we, you better bring, we don't have any of that stuff, so.
So like the rubber, like, medical gloves, would that work?
We have some of that, but I think tomorrow I'll just work gloves. Because really, the stuff is not, it's just wet.
Okay.
So we're gonna be tearing up the walls, pulling it, it's not, not, we're not gonna leave the wiring, it's gonna cut around the wiring. We gotta do as little as possible, but get it so we can dry it. And I've got dehumidifiers ordered, they should be here next week. We can put in the building and dry it out.
I'll be there tomorrow to do clerical work.
Okay. Be warned, if I get sixty people, I'm gonna work for everybody, but we'll appreciate it.
It's okay.
I know Danville Fire Department's on their way over because we were over there for twelve hours. So they called me already and said, we're on our way tomorrow, it's okay.
I know, there's some plans and booked in a place for food already.
You do, okay.
Rachel and Danielle were talking about it.
Do you need tools and, should we bring tools?
Yeah, things like hammers and progress, I'll have a couple saws. Really, I'm just gonna cut a line and we just pull it off. So just, you know, it's one of those many hands make light work type of thing. If one guy's, if you have someone picking up a piece of sheet rock, second it comes off the wall or moving some equipment out. Because anything that's dry and left, that's the next thing. Is I was hoping to get permission to continue to use the town hall for meeting and office space because we really aren't gonna be able to use that, use our room.
I'm firmly in favor of that.
We're in there, you know, we gotta, we just need a place. We lost our computer, we bought a laptop to replace it. We'll have to work with Robin when she has it rented.
I was gonna say, Skip Macazoni has asked for it for tomorrow morning.
What's it?
Lake Association meeting?
We can make room for them in there.
Okay.
We'll just move our stuff, it's okay.
Oh, so they're not canceling?
I haven't heard that they have so hard, so hard.
I thought it was canceled.
Oh, I don't know, I have, he hasn't
He hasn't talked to her yet.
But I've also been dealing with the family funeral, so.
I'll check with him since
Yeah, because we've kept the post office. I'm trying to keep the water down because Robin had a lot on her plate. So we pumped it out. I've been going there every couple of times a day. Keeps coming in, but we're trying to get it.
They can also use here if they want to come here.
So if that's okay, that's what our plan
I'll definitely check, I'm pretty sure you canceled.
So when do I get my mail?
So So I spoke, I spoke with the postmaster. The postmaster, and I, I've already, once we get the basement dry, and is the panel in the basement? Or is it upstairs, the electrical panel?
In the I believe it's upstairs.
Okay, so once we get the basement dry, which if you can get someone to keep watching, because I'm gonna run out of time to do that, I have the sump pump running now.
Okay.
Then I can get the state inspectors in. When they deem the building safe and there's no water in the basement, the post, the postmaster can open the post office.
But she told me today she has to have a postal inspector coming inspector.
And before that, I've got to get the state fire marshal. Well, they've got a postal inspector. I've got the, I've got to get the state fire marshal and the state electrical inspector in there.
Everything? I mean
Yep.
Yeah, welcome. If you go to Berry, there's a whole show going on.
Yeah, really.
We just got a little side show. I had a whole vanload of federal agents, ATF agents and FEMA people showed up. And I didn't know where you were exactly, so I just, ah, I'm gonna get, I gotta name you. I think he called, I'll get him in touch with Alfie's one about road damage, so.
Yeah, and I did, when I was at the post office this morning, she was there picking up all of the mail. So any mail that was in the post office is now in Hardwick.
And road-wise, I've been told by the state, I was conversing with the road foreman for Northmont Hillier, they're hoping to have that tonight. If you go to our Facebook page, I'm keeping people up to date on that highway issue.
To Hardwick, you mean?
Yeah. Because he's gonna call me when it's open.
Yeah, I saw like, I talked to that guy.
Well, that's, remember, this is dynamic, isn't it? They got enough stone haul, don't assume, that was their hope.
Tim, please go on.
Yeah, just, just follow-up comments. So a lot of people don't use Facebook.
I go.
And so to the extent that we can put this kind of information about the post office, about the road on our town website, you know, something along those lines. Because just to get that information, because all, everything with the post office is news to me. I had no idea it was even closed, although now it makes sense. But I'm sure there's a, all the town spokes have no idea that the mail has stopped flowing. So, you know, to the extent that we can get this information either on the town website and then maybe try and work with front page form.
So would you say that people get front page form?
Just don't use Facebook.
So at the post office, on the door itself, it states that it's closed and that your mail's in Hardwick.
And there was also a phone number there for you to call.
You go to get the mail, that's on the front door.
Okay, because when I dropped off mail recently, there was no posting on the post office at the time that I went. And that was right after the flood.
Yeah, they, they're, they're Wednesday.
That was Tuesday morning.
But just to follow up for people, just if we can have it on our website, if we can put it on front page form, from the select board, it's just general, basic information for everyday life. It would just help a thing with people.
There's too many websites, if you will.
So just in fairness, it has been really tough to get information out. It just, this week has been very dynamic. But that's on my list for my stuff to talk about is just getting as much information as we can on the website. That was on my list. Because we have a Facebook page and a website, and everybody goes there. So, you know, if we could, if you have your page, I can get that information as I get. Because people have been coming to me and they're calling. I mentioned the list of folks who need help collected at the town offices. People have damaged property, get a list at the town offices. Places to go to get info, list at the town offices. That covers that part of it. The next thing I had was we want to, is probably as quickly as we can, get the generator propane tank filled back up in case we have another disaster.
I'll call somebody. Paul, Ellen?
Yes, I am.
Is Skip in town?
He is.
Okay, so I can get the information to him, so we can put it onto the website for me?
Yeah, I'm going home right now, I'll give him my heads off.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the meeting.
Thank you, Ellen. Good to see you.
I'm not gonna have any alarms coming off if I open this door.
No, I don't think so, no.
So, so one of the problems we had is, is we don't have, and it's not the select board's fault, we physically don't have an emergency management director, which we're supposed to have, so.
We've been trying.
Yeah, something that people can think about. Part of the, some of the shortcomings, having been involved in quite a few disasters, not having that structure in place. So that needs to happen.
So I think that, I completely agree with you.
And it's not throwing rocks, it's just a fact on the ground.
But I caught a pebble right here.
Yeah.
So I did reach out to, I mean, so Sam Lash did reach out to me. I tried to give updates as often as I could. I don't know if Sam reached out to. So we are getting some communication.
Okay, and I've been in touch with the EOC.
But you're EOC, unfortunately, and so that has fallen on your shoulders.
But the problem is when you break it into the structure, I'm supposed to be fire and rescue.
I know, and so
Yeah, so we'll get it.
So we have to get it squared away.
So moving forward, we gotta fix it. And then all of the town employees, like you, the select board, town clerk, all need to go to their ICS training, incident command structure. You'll understand the system.
Yep.
If you don't, we're all, like, the firemen are all one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred, have all been to those classes.
Yep.
You can, most of them are online. And the worst ones for the select board are the administrative ones, is like a two-day class to understand.
You have to go in person.
Because like, you would be, you'd be the financial officer. The select board is basically the incident commander who, because you might be authorizing emergency expenditures. Like, someone needs ten thousand bucks, they gotta go borrow it, you know, because that's the kind of way this works. And then there are resources at the EOC, like, as I said, I had them call numerous times. I got a call yesterday, they knew we'd been out for days. And they said, we'll send six firefighters to your town to man your equipment if you guys want to go home. Do you need a, what, do you need a swift water? Do you need generators? Do you need lighting? Do you need water? Do you need? So again, any of the needs that we don't have that come up in these things you're collecting, you can call the EOC and they have resources to get it. So that's it. They're going to do what they call a hot wash, so get ready. They're, they're gonna come and we're gonna evaluate the performance of the town in a couple of weeks. So get ready.
This is, um, EOC?
For how our structure went.
Okay.
Which wasn't great because it just, how it works.
Because it doesn't exist.
So EOC is Emergency Operations Center?
Yeah, so every, of the town of Woodbury.
No, I mean of the
Of the state, state of Vermont.
What department are they in? Homeland Security?
Homeland Security.
They're Homeland.
So they're in with
Yeah.
The other emergency.
Because again, we would declare, the select board would declare an emergency. And then the structure moves into place where someone goes to the town offices. The treasurer's there, the town clerk's there to document. Because we're in document, document, document. Now, every dollar, every staple you buy, write it down. Like, for me, when a pump goes out, I gotta sign to people how many pieces of hose, what kind of pump it was. Because when I fill out the form to get reimbursed, they want all that information. So you need to have that kind of detail, photographs, that's what's coming for everybody.
And that's what Sam Lash said, document, document, document.
And then for you, make sure the repairs look temporary, bumpy, not so good.
Good enough for now.
So the problem is if you fix the road so it looks perfect and FEMA shows up and it looks perfect, they're gonna say, no issue. If you pull a culvert back and you marry it and fix it and plant grass, they're gonna go, no money for you, sorry. So what we're doing at the firehouse is everything we're cleaning up, I'm photographing and documenting. That way it's damaged, same with the insurance, it mitigates the problem, but
But this is why, Ms. Carroll, we have to document everything.
That's why it's a real pain.
We're gonna try to fix it, fix it as well as functional, but go document it.
So where we are in the, in the process, we were in the emergency phase, fire rescue, flooded roads. That ended about Wednesday. We are now in what they would call the recovery phase, where we're getting roads open. We're getting, finding the last few houses that don't have access, solving those problems, finding someone that can't get their medicine. These are the things, if you know neighbors that are in need, that don't, can't get food or they can't get their medicine, we need to know at the town offices.
On the food shelf, then you call me.
Right, well, some of the problems are Walgreens isn't open.
Topps is not open.
Right, so the kind of things that are gonna be coming up in the next two weeks is an elderly person that can't drive. And they can't get their medicine here. There's resources to get the medicine at the hospital and other places.
Yep.
That's where if you collect it at the town office, we can get it out to me or someone that can find a resource to get them help. And we have great people in this town. I'm sure someone can say, I'll drive you to Berry, for example, to the pharmacy. That's the kind of thing that's gonna be happening in the next two weeks, the needs that are gonna come up. Someone can't shop, for example.
Ms. Diana?
I wanna ask Tim, you said you know of people who can't get out of their home. Can you tell us, or provide that information?
At least one up on the Cabot Road.
Dan Jarnes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not only that, Mark DeMers's place was locked up tight for a while, so.
And can he get out now, or?
His driveway, his driveway is fixed.
Okay.
Yes.
Boom, but DeMers driveway?
Mark DeMers.
Yeah, but not Jarnes.
No, no, he just hooked it out. That's an orange, the culvert on the road bridge. But they marked the other place.
Oh, and the other way, one more item is, we did have to get 19 gallons of fuel at the town garage, that's part of the emergency plan, so we can resolve that at some point.
Yep.
Because we're cut off from fuel in the emergency plan, I think you were gonna approve last Monday, but you didn't do it. That's our plan, is to.
I'm sorry, my bridge was already gone.
So, so the emergency plan is we get fuel at the town garage, and we'll just resolve it as we mitigate this problem.
So, coming out of the.
Hi, Sandy Reed from Lakeville Road, and also with Hydric Rescue. Just kinda informational, anyone who fills, or has refills of their prescriptions at the Harvard Walgreens, there's a number that we've listed on the Hydric Rescue page, Lindenbills, Walgreens, you can call them there, they can arrange to fulfill your prescription and send it to a CVS or another pharmacy that's close by, so you can fill your. And we're doing that for all of our calls too, all of our rescue calls now, we're asking every single patient.
Right, you have resources.
Do you have anxiety about food, water, and prescriptions?
Yeah, we're all doing that.
Great.
So things coming in through their polluted wells, polluted springs, septic systems that don't work, or things will get added to your list, documented.
You have a question. I live, I live in the woods.
Yes, what?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
My ignorance is exceeded only by my lack of information. The shelter of which you speak, praise God, I don't need it, but if I need to send somebody in there, what is it and where is it?
It's the school. And if you need to call someone, because it's not open right now, I opened it, again, because the structure wasn't there, I just opened it and I found somebody to, to run it. But normally the EOC in the town would be notified by me saying, because what was happening to us, is people were arriving from all over, and they're trapped. By the time they got here, you can't get the cabot, we couldn't get out of this way, and then they're like, like, you're stuck here. And so we sent them, the very last few people, we couldn't even get to the school, because the water was over the guardrail, so. They thought I was kidding, I said, drive to the top of the Cabot Road and park at the end of the pavement and sit there all night, like, haha, I'm like, no, I'm dead serious, because the road's washed out above it, it's a mudslide, and then she went up, the poor woman, that's when the flood came down, and I think I could hear screaming in her car window. She thought I was kidding, but I wasn't.
And a totally unrelated comment, since I stole the floor. There are occasionally good signs to these catastrophes. To the best, my casual observation, the petty, and not so petty thievery and drug trade in Outkast Woodbury seems to be temporarily suspended.
Really?
I don't, I don't know what the user, I don't know what the users are doing, but they.
Well, on the other side, we've had an uptick in calls from people on withdrawals.
Withdrawals. So it's not all, it's not all good.
So you didn't bring, you couldn't bring a dumpster?
Okay, we're running a little low on time, Ms. Carol, do you have one more comment before we move on?
I forgot what I was gonna talk about.
Not, not great, awesome. We're gonna move on really quickly, all right. So we do need to talk about damage to the town office and town park. I think the town park, we're gonna leave alone, to be honest, because we're gonna have more damage in no time.
Chuck's not here, but he did offer to clean it up.
To clean it up.
You can get a bill, so if you could talk to Chuck, you'd probably.
It's not a high priority.
I'm gonna leave the town park alone, because we're gonna continue to use it for lots of different triage.
What is the name of the town?
It's no name.
It's the town park.
It's called, it's called Stony Acres right now.
All right.
It needs to be dedicated.
Sorry, running out of time. Ms. Brandy? Would you like to describe some of the damage to the town office, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
When I arrived at the town office, there was a horrendous smell that, to me, smelled like propane, which we don't heat with propane, we heat with oil. Went in the basement, at that point, we probably had three to four inches of water on both sides. So there's a lip that goes into, out of the furnace room and up into where we store tax maps and other stuff that, that got at least, at the end, seven inches of water damage in the basement. We, I made umpteen million calls, Robin saved our you-know-what, and was able to pick up two subpumps that I purchased on a town account for the basement. The fire department came, opened up, aired out. The leak was pulling in an inch and a half.
Did it stop?
No, it's still, it's still trickling. The leak is underneath the septic pipe. It smells, so the, the subpump that's in there now, there's still an inch and a half to two inches, because the subpump isn't created permanently. It needs to have a permanent hole put in there, and put to the outside of the building, so this doesn't happen again. Yeah, so I have called, I contacted three cleaning companies, and none of them wanna take on new customers right now.
Hence we're ripping out our own building.
So what was the extent of the damage to the town records, was there?
Um, there's a whole, upstairs, nothing. Downstairs, there was a box of maps that, and stuff on, anything that was on the floor downstairs is, is on, yeah.
Maybe like some of the supplies and things like that, it was.
There's, yeah. But the sheet rock, yeah.
The floor down there will have to be pulled up. I went downstairs when I stopped to print this stuff off. Feel it, it's all punky.
Another time, work day.
Plywood was put in.
Finding, finding a water payment contractor, you might as well push the blast.
And at some point, I'm gonna have to have somebody with strong muscles to go down there and move a bucket of water for me.
I blew that out, no, I'm gonna stick the subpump in it and suck it out that way. That's all I'm gonna do. But yeah, there's a bunch of stuff that needs to be taken out, and I.
Well, maybe we can split our Saturday workday and shuffle some people down to the town office.
We could send them down there. It's the same issue, anything organic that's wet has to get removed, you'll get mold. And then the wood's organic, obviously, but you'll have to put fans and dehumidifiers to it.
Right, and everything's pretty much wood.
Because I've got a couple dehumidifiers coming, and we can move them over there when we're done, I don't know when they're gonna get here, though.
Well, let's see what happens if we have too many people for.
We can split.
We can split crews.
We'll just end up piling it outside for now, we've got a dumpster coming.
I want to get in contact with the septic system, to have it pumped, to figure out what is the cause and why the runoff is, whether it's overflow of the leak field, but yeah.
Okay.
What would be like, um, just a, I don't know, I'm just thinking of septic water and like tearing out stuff, what would be the thing to do as far as?
Gloves and N95 masks, remember gloves and N95 masks?
Yeah.
And probably safety goggles, if you don't want poopy in your eyes.
And the thing is, I mean, the town office has no screens, so.
You know what?
There's no screens on any windows.
So it's kinda dead.
And all the windows are old, and so it's been locked up during the day, when we leave, we lock it up.
So it's got a funk.
So it's got a funk.
So is that, is the leak fixed at this point?
No, it's still coming.
It's still dripping.
It's still.
So to me, that would be the highest priority, to stop that.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's groundwater, and again, through the septic tank, and it's going into the basement.
Right.
Well, then, I don't know if it's coming through the septic tank.
We have no idea.
The smell is coming from somewhere.
The smell that tops it is.
I agree that that's a high priority.
It's the sewer line that's leaving the building, going into the tank, and it's got a hole in the very bottom of it.
When it burns your nose when you walk into a building, it's nasty, and you don't heat the propane.
That needs to be ASAP, I mean, whatever it costs.
And you said the steam heating, so the boilers, the furnaces?
The furnace was underwater.
Yeah.
There was seven inches downstairs.
So that'll have to be replaced, actually, right?
Okay.
You file your insurance claim.
They say it depends on if it's propane or oil.
What's the difference, I mean, if something is contaminated and the water's.
Because they tell me that with an oil furnace, they can remove all of the filters in there.
Regardless of that.
It is oil.
We need to.
Stop the water.
Need to stop the water and, like, address the leak and then actually start to tear stuff down, so. I agree with Alfie that that should be a really high priority. And we should start on Saturday.
Paul, do you have gear available for people who are volunteering to help at the town office?
I don't have much of anything.
No, okay.
Most of it went down the river somewhere, you probably didn't find it.
Okay, do you know of any resources where people could get that stuff?
Not unless we can get the habashons.
I will bring as much N95 gear as I can.
Like, in the firehouse, it's dry enough, so we just regular, bring some gloves and, if you want eye protection.
I'm just thinking of the town office.
The town offices is a little more dicey, because probably shouldn't do a lot down there till we get the water stopped.
Stopped.
Puddles of poop.
Yeah, make sure you wear rubber boots.
Yeah.
I didn't on that day, I had flip flops on.
I had sandals on and I changed into sneakers, and they're now in the dumpster.
All right, so we have some priorities, thank you, Brandy, thank you, Robin. I don't want to have this meeting go on too long, but.
Why?
Because I actually am pretty worn out, and I have things I have to do on my own.
It's been one hell of a week.
Especially like getting home, no offense, because I don't have a bridge out there.
Your driveway was washed out, though, I saw that.
My driveway is gone.
His driveway is gone.
So is my bridge.
So how are you actually getting back and forth across there?
There's, there's, there's some, there are a few rocks that we were able to move with a tractor on some of the old beams, so we can walk it.
I don't know how you got the cars across.
We don't, our cars are up at the top.
Oh, they're still.
Yeah, we stole, we stole, we stole, we stole a car from somebody else, and that's, that's what we have right now.
I maneuver with no charge anymore.
All right, not to trivialize this, but I think that this conversation about FEMA and other resources for reimbursement is a conversation that we're going to have to have at our next meeting, because there's a lot that we all have to actually deal with before we can get there, Michael.
Info's coming out next week.
Info is not gonna be really available for us for four days, as far as I've read. Four, we have four days.
They told me to expect FEMA people next week sometime.
Sometime, that's what I had read as well. Please, Ms. Diana, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that Alfie knows to document everything.
Yes, I am.
I.
Have you been through this before, even before you were in Woodbury?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta say, it's not easy.
It's not fun.
It's really difficult.
They want, they want every load of gravel, the location of that gravel, every hour that a machine was worked, and the location of the road that, you know, not just the road name, but the.
What section? Specific section for.
So you're doing that?
Best I can. Right now, it's just on a notepad, with how many loads went where, and that kind of thing. I've got one notepad in each truck, and I'm asking the guys to write that down with those.
They'll send some FEMA people here to help us.
I would reiterate what Paul said, if anybody in the audience wants to.
Help.
Help with that documentation, I'll get the information, but it still needs to be, like, put on a spreadsheet or.
There's forms coming, there's lots of forms.
Lots of forms coming.
Lots of federal forms.
But not only that, photos, we have to, to have photos to back all this up.
Yep.
Which I have.
For every road, for every.
Everybody's got a camera, a camera, a cell phone, so we're taking pictures as we go.
Right, and, I mean, if those guys have an iPhone or an Android, get spot locations.
Is our, is our emergency plan been approved?
Yeah.
Because that'll stop us from filing, okay.
I just have to sit, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Carol.
Quick, the red tape is supposed to be cut, according to the governor. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a lie? Is that a lie?
It's, we'll find out soon enough.
We'll find out.
I, I've been down this road a few times, or a few others, it's, it's, it's a process, just.
They can ring the phone to the door.
Work through it. The end, the end result's usually okay, it's just, it's not pretty good.
It's gonna take a tough road to get there. Go ahead.
It might be a good time to hire somebody, if we could find somebody to hire to administer all this next couple months of paperwork.
Sounds great.
Next, next week.
Lindsay might do it.
Let's, 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 let's not put Skip into this one, he's not.
We're gonna throw Skip one of them.
Let's not talk to, talk about Skip always, okay?
Yes, we can.
But we could ask him.
Well, there are people in town who are capable of doing that, and, you know, it's only for a couple months, maybe.
Well, no, it'll be longer.
It'll be much longer than that.
Because you have monthly subreciprant reports.
Yeah, we're talking about, we're talking about eight to fifteen.
Bet you didn't even know subreciprant was a word.
Sure it is. You said it, it's a word.
I did file my quarterly report one time and found out. Well, how can you do that? You don't owe me any money, but your grant is not closed yet, so you need quarterly subreciprant reports to say you didn't do anything. It lasted for three or four years after Irene, I was filling out subreciprant reports. Until they finally closed my grant, the lady with the high heels showed up to tell me that we were good.
I'm gonna put emergency planning off for probably another special meeting we have, though we do have a regular select board meeting next Monday, which I'm sure a lot of this stuff will.
Not next Monday, but the Monday.
Monday following, excuse me.
So we're not gonna reschedule the one that we canceled, we're just gonna skip over to the next one?
Well, that's why we were going to originally have one on Monday. To be honest. Which I would rather do, I'd rather have us meet again on Monday, and.
There's the, so there's three weeks worth of stuff.
Three weeks worth of stuff that we have not done.
Correct.
So, I'm gonna put it out there right now, that we are, we are going, we are going to have a rescheduled select board meeting for this coming Monday. Will be here in the community room at 6:00 PM.
Can you have it at the town hall, because the planning commission has the third Monday for their meeting here in the community.
Can you have it inside the library instead?
I will be happy to have it at the.
Is the town hall useful at the moment?
I'll be happy to have it at the town hall.
Well, just let us know, because our stuff, we'll get it moved around, so.
I think we'll.
We're, we're kinda using that as our.
Or the planning commission can decide not to meet, and you guys can have a room, I'm fine with that, too, we, you know.
Uh, all right.
We aren't dealing with burning issues.
Yeah, why don't we just.
So, based on Michael's con, based on Michael's comments.
The planning commission will not meet next Monday.
I wouldn't have it there anyway, so.
Right.
No, I'm off the hook.
So how is the septic in the water in the town hall?
So, I, Minos gratefully came, what, today's Friday, right? This is how bad my, I don't even know.
They came on Wednesday.
Came on, was it Wednesday?
It was Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday they came, because Monday, Sunday through Tuesday seems like Monday. So it was Wednesday, I called Minos, they showed up, my, our water treatment system is busted, I had them cut it out, but the well pump is on, so you have water, don't drink it.
Okay.
And the septic is working at the fire station and the town hall.
Okay.
Fire department's toilet will be, if you're not shy, after tomorrow, you can use the fire department's toilet, and I would use the town hall, because you'll have, it'll, you know, the water, it'll be open walls. If you're not shy, reverse European toilet. They have to be covered in lower. Be like my dogs hiding with their head underneath the pillow, and sticking out.
Chris, what's Monday's date?
Uh, Monday will be the 17th.
Thank you.
So I'll get an agenda out, you wanted to save us the agenda for last week?
I would, I'd like to go back to our regular agenda, and we will also probably have on that list some FEMA issues that we can start to address.
Yeah, okay.
Please. If possible, I would also like, Paul, if you could possibly be there.
It's gonna be Monday, you said.
This is Monday at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, just send me the.
I will send you a link.
I gotta go to a fire in Greensboro Monday, I got a Dover fire Tuesday. I'm investigating, so I haven't been able to do any of my insurance work this week, I gave up, I, I was supposed to be with the hazmat deployed somewhere, but I stayed here because we needed.
You needed to be here.
I was needed here, so I just gave that up this week, because they were, we were, I could have been all over the state, don't worry about it.
Mr. Larry, would you be willing to be here 6:00 PM on Monday as well?
I'll be here Monday.
Thank you, sir.
Would you and you look at the agenda for the meeting that we reached, that we canceled, and see if there's some things we can take off there for now?
Sure, yeah, I'll take a peek.
I doubt I'll have insurance updates then, but.
I'm not expecting it.
Yeah, maybe middle of next week.
One question before you disappear. I have gravity feed spring water, totally fine, right? Should I be drinking that?
If you, so, so I would say this, what FEMA told me is if you have surface, surface water of any kind, you should get it tested. Because the mass of water, anything could have gone in your spring.
And they'll send you a.
They'll send you a test kit.
For free.
Even if, I'm not gonna drink the fire department's well until I have a test, even though the cap's sealed, I don't wanna know that it means some horrible smelling stuff went down through their oil, and, you know, so it's all going, it's all going to Lake Champlain, Berlins is gonna be dealing with it for a while, but oily, nasty water went in, it could be in our well, so.
Anything that came down Kingsbury branch.
Usually.
I live in the woods, there's.
Boil your water.
I think you should get the test kit and check it, that's my.
You're probably pretty good, Carol, because there's not a lot of water.
Above you, but.
Look, look at me.
But I would still, that's the recommendation.
I mean, I really would test your water.
It's safe and safe.
I really would test your water, we tested our water, we're okay, we have a subsurface well, up gradient from us, but still.
A well or a spring?
We have a well. We're still testing.
I'm even getting the well tested that was under water.
I really would, I would, I would test, and it's free. Don't, don't, don't wait, just do it, might as well.
A lot of water came through.
A lot of water moved through this area.
How close is your spring to that Beaver Dam up there? How close is your spring to the Beaver Dam up there?
Not far.
Chuck's up there. Chuck's up there, cutting that dam out.
But, but the thing is. My beaver dam is intact.
Yeah, I really would test your water.
Yeah, I'll.
Where did all the water come from that came down?
Jarnes's, they took out Jarnes's.
No, no, that came down, um, for Donnie Turgeon lens, Farm Town Road.
Farm Town Road.
Where did all that water come from?
It comes basically from up gradient along that set of springs that are always active.
There was a lot of flow of water, Robin, I don't, you know, those beaver dams up there always get blamed for flooding here.
No, I just wondered where it was coming from.
They have bushes, and they're so old, they're like totally entrenched roots.
So when I saw being out at night, I was out all night, and water was running off hillsides like I've never seen, like.
It's never.
It was, it was surface water.
Yeah.
Flow.
Water, water was just shooting off hillsides where there's no stream.
Right, right.
You'll have to remember, and this is just not your select board person, but your geologist in town speaking, um, we've had a pretty wet period.
Right.
Groundwater was saturated, there is no place for the water to go, so surface water flow is very common during conditions like this, and so it's not where it's coming from, it's the fact that you're aggrating a significant amount of water really, really quickly.
Seven inch range.
And that's why there's a mudslide in town, it's not just the water running into the duty.
The sponge that was full.
Right, or the land is.
It was unbelievable, it come in down at 14.
Yeah.
Down in this southern hair area, when I stopped there, it was just running off the side hill, just taking the road out.
I just had my Sandy garden work the wall.
Sandy loves to suck up water.
Tell me, my garden, it's been sitting there for months, there's a lot of growth, it's been so wet. Courtesy.
Alright, as much as I love the colloquial discussion at this point, uh, we will continue on.
Yeah, right.[1702.20]